Good morning. I'd like to call the regular scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. It's Monday, July 18th, 2016. It is now 8:31. First order of business would be to pledge allegiance. I'd like to ask Selectman Cartier to lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united on individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Cindy. Item two, public forum, limited to three minutes on any agenda item. Anybody wishing to address the board? See none, we'll move along. Item three, approval of the minutes for July 5th, which was a regular meeting. Do I have a motion, please?
Second.
Motion made seconded. Any additions or corrections? See none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Our motion carries. Thank you. Item three, excuse me, four, Guilford High School Building Committee. Four dot one, consider and take possible action on a recommendation from the Guilford High School Building Committee to approve contract amendment with Malone and McBroom for inspection and contract management services for the synthetic turf field. Who will be addressing? Will it be Mary or Cliff?
Cliff, I'm just here for the ride.
Okay, Mary, thank you. Cliff?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. How you doing? Good. So, I am filling in for the members of the building committee to help out. They approved at their last meeting for MM and I to provide construction inspection services for the new turf field that will be going in. Outside of that, they have approved an amount of $68,500 for the contract with Malone and McBroom. I don't know if you have further questions?
Yeah, I do. We do have a contract with them. We approved. This was several months ago.
Correct.
And that was, I believe, the design of the field?
Correct.
Okay, now, obviously, that contract did not cover the construction.
Correct. That was not part of it, yes.
Why are we continuing with them to oversee the construction?
Correct. Well, the reason they're doing this, obviously, the people that did the design, it makes most sense to have them follow through on the construction administration to make sure that the contractor follows all the specifications and qualifications that were put into the bid. So, it ensures that we get what was designed in the original packet that went up to bid.
So, it, I tend to agree with that, but just for the sake of discussion, okay, so it's more expedient and efficient to deal with the design firm rather than to seek more, seeking kind of bids on this?
Correct. And I think part of it was because there was options going into this turf field or natural, you know, field, and there's variations of the different turf fields. I don't think at that point in time, until they made decision, could they actually get the CA amounts, because your construction services would depend on what type of field went in. So, that's why they waited to get these, this proposal.
Okay. And I understand that this is a project where ONG Fusco is not involved?
Correct. They are just about done with their work.
They're done.
Correct. So, this is outside that.
Okay, great. Mary, do you have anything to add on this?
It's exactly as Cliff said. ONG Fusco is just about done, and it doesn't pay for us to have both ONG Fusco and Malone and McBroom at the same job site.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Seeing no other discussion, I'll call for a vote. Well, first of all, I need a motion to accept the bid.
So moved.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Item five, Finance Department, Andy Potashny, receives a monthly report from the Finance Department. Morning, sir.
Good morning.
How you doing? How do you want to start us off here?
Well, I just may make a few quick comments.
Sure.
Basically, you have the reports. I think one of the most important things to remember is that there will be changes to both the revenues and the expenditures report. As usual, the transactions that occur in July are applicable to the 15, 16 year. So, the numbers will change, and that happens every year. That's nothing new. It's been going on, I think, since counting started, probably. With that little preface, just to talk briefly about the revenue report, right now, you're running about $618,000 over budget. And that's primarily in three areas. You have the town clerk, which is, I think, around $74,000 over budget, and the bulk of that is in, is in conveyance taxes. And of course, you have the tax collector's office, which is running about $436,000. And that's a combination both of the current year taxes and prior year taxes. There was quite a bit of, probably about half of that is prior year taxes also. So, that's good. That's, that's very good. And the third major one there is in the fire department, which of course is the ambulance. That's about $98,000 over budget. Now, again, there will be some additional revenue coming in July, which is applicable to last year, to the pre, to the 15, 16 year. And a year ago this time, you picked up about $137,000 in additional revenue, and that was primarily in the tax collector's office and the ambulance. So, those are, those obviously are the big areas. So, those, basically, again, the key is these numbers will change.
Andy, with the fire, is that because of delayed in payment for, like, with revenue, or is it actually just they had a great month, or?
No, it's delayed. There's always, they're always a month behind.
Yeah, that's what, okay.
But the, the reason they're over budget, I talked to Charlie last Thursday, I believe, was he said the bulk of, the number of calls that they handled.
That's what I mean, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, you're right, Cindy. Where we are now, we're over because of the bulk of the calls.
Yeah.
But there will be money because of the delay.
Right, right, okay.
Okay.
And calls have been increasing all year long.
That's, that's what Charlie informed me.
Just, I might want to comment about tax collection for current year, is that, as you recall, we never budget 100% of tax collection, because you can't count on receiving 100% of your tax collection in any one current year. So, we've just gotten a little better at our collection.
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah, she was close to 100% last year, John. That was, yeah, much as, I mean, credit to the department.
That's good. Very good. Expenditures, take a few thoughts on the expenditures?
Unless there's any questions on revenue, any comments? No.
The, again, at the present time, we, the report shows that we have a little over $2 million. Believe me, that will change. That will change. And again, because of the, the payments in July that are applicable to the previous year, and also the encumbrances will change. Some may even decrease a little bit, but others may go up. There's, there's always a number of transactions. There's always a delay in getting things done. There are a few departments right now that are over budget, the registrar, Natural Resources, Fire, and the debt service. The, I think the registrar voters, we all know why that's over budget.
Unfortunately.
Yeah. The natural, I'm sorry, Natural Resources Department, that's a new one. That wasn't around when I was here years ago. I had a look at that one. But apparently, there's been substantial tree removal. You have some rather large trees that have driven that up. The fire, I talked to Charlie. He thinks that's going to change. He's doing some work with some of those encumbrances, so it should be there. And the debt service interest, still looking at that, but I think that was payment was scheduled to come out of a, out of the reserve for debt service. So, that will probably be adjusted, too. But there will be changes there, so even though it, it looks good, and it probably will be good when it's all wrapped up, but certainly not to that magnitude, at least in my opinion, at this time.
Yeah, and you're not aware of this, but there will be some additional encumbrances coming from the police department, too.
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, and the other thing, too, I should comment there. One, the other probably fairly significant items will be payroll. We have to book the accrued payroll, because of the people are, some people lag a week behind in payroll. So, when the payment was made in the new year, some of that has to be charged back to the old year. So, that will be also a factor involved there.
And that's because of your pay to interiors?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, those were the basic comments I have on those two reports. As far as the warrants, I went through those and a lot of.
Before you go on, excuse me, are there any questions on the expense reports? Okay, thank you.
Apologize.
Sorry.
You know me, I can't wait, right?
Yeah, that's okay.
As far as the warrants, I went through those, and I have to comment on the staff and the Finance Department for wading through them with me. And I truly didn't find anything significant in there. I think one thing that did jump out in me, I got all excited, was a payment to Connecticut Water of, I think, about $38,000. It was, what the heck is that for? And I forgot the hydrants.
Hydrants.
The fire hydrants, that you've rented the fire hydrant. So, other than that, on the warrants, I didn't see anything that was too exciting.
Okay.
Okay? Any questions on those?
Anything you want to comment on medical benefits?
Yes, I have that next. Right now, your, your revenues, the income, the cash coming in exceed the expenditures, the claims and administrative costs by about $939,000. And if you look at that in relation to your beginning fund balance of 673, it looks like right now you have a fund balance of $1,606,000, roughly, $1,612,000. The only change I would see with that would be the so-called incurred but not reported claims. And that happens every year. At the beginning of the 15, 16 year, we had, I think it was $973,000 booked as incurred but not, or incurred but not reported claims. Any significant change up and down in that, and based on the track record of claims so far, it, I don't think be significant. But any changes to that would affect that fund balance. I can see where that incurred but not reported would change that much to really have any serious effect in that. So, it looks like this, this fund is in very good shape at this time.
Not like it was way back when.
Yeah, I can remember those days.
And then, one of the factors that contribute to this is, I don't think you were here then, is that we lowered our cutoff.
Right.
Of the catastrophic loss.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But as you can see, the, we pay a higher premium, but we've, it was a good call. In some years, it is, in some years, it's not.
It's always that way with insurance, really. Sometimes it's good, and as you were saying, John.
But we saved $263,000 this year by doing that.
Yeah, you paid $880 for the catastrophic, or umbrella, call it what you will, and.
But claims were $1.1 million.
Yeah, yeah, so it turned out very, very good for you guys.
Right, okay, good.
Those are the.
Any questions for Andy?
Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like you didn't miss a beat, did you? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay. Okay. Item six, Town Planner, George Croll. Six one, discuss and take possible action on a grant from the Connecticut Department of Housing to carry out feasibility study assessing the potential to develop affordable housing on the town-owned property Woodruff Farms, as I call it. Morning, George.
Morning.
Okay, and in your packet, you'll see we have a memo from George, so.
We have that in front of you dated July 13th.
Yep, yep. You want to take us through that, then?
Yeah, I will. I also made a couple copies of a map, aerial photo of the portion of the property, just to, so I can refer to that, so that you're all aware of exactly what we're talking about. You'll recall that we've received a grant from the Department of Housing to develop a, an inventory of property in Guilford, property that's accessible to public transit, and property that has the relevant requirements for feasible development of multifamily housing. That report was prepared by Waldo and Associates. I think we reported to you on that. They identified eight sites as part of that inventory. This is working with the Housing for Economic Development Planning Committee. That inventory was reviewed by the planning committee. One of the properties on that list is the drive, what I refer to as the driveway portion of the Woodruff property, which is the only town-owned property on, among those eight properties. In discussing this over several months with the committee, a number of developers expressed interest in the Woodruff property. These were nonprofit developers who specialize in affordable housing development. This was part of the purpose of doing the initial inventory, and especially the public forum that we held to review the initial inventory, was to solicit developer interest in any of the eight sites. As I mentioned, several nonprofit developers have expressed interest in the Woodruff property, including Neighbor Works, which is a property owner in Guilford now, the Apple Tree Lane development, which you're familiar with. And several other nonprofit developers are interested in working with the town to perhaps develop some housing on the Woodruff property. The, since the Woodruff property is town-owned, obviously, that will require the various town approvals before that can happen. The first step in this process, as, as determined by the state funding programs for affordable housing development, is the development of a feasibility study associated with a particular project that the municipality might identify as perhaps feasible or desirable. The state makes funding available to towns to do initial feasibility studies, to assess what might happen, to do preliminary plans, to illustrate the type of development that might be appropriate, to assess whatever constraints and opportunities there are on the site with regard to potential development, including wetlands, flooding issues in this particular case, sewage disposal, opportunities and constraints. Particular to this property, the town has expressed desire to work with the Department of Transportation to develop parking on this property for the train station. This is something we've been talking about for several years. That could influence, probably would influence, the type of housing development that it could be accommodated. The traffic impacts associated with any particular development would be assessed as part of this feasibility study. Once the plans were prepared, the preliminary plans, public and neighborhood impact would be analyzed, including public meetings with the neighbors and others to assess their, their feelings about whatever proposed development appears to be reasonable. So, the committee, especially given this nonprofit developer interest, is anxious to move forward with this assessment or feasibility study. And that's the reason that they asked me to come before you today, to seek permission to move forward. I believe it probably would be appropriate to authorize the first selectmen to submit this application, not me, because I believe the application has to be made on behalf of the town, and the first selectman would probably be the appropriate person to represent the town. I would prepare, along with the committee, the application materials. We believe we have a very good chance of receiving these funds. The, there are a number of constraints, as I mentioned, on this particular property. There are also some major advantages that make it possible or desirable for affordable housing development. The fact that the town owns it is a huge plus, of course. The, the fact that the property is immediately accessible to the train station makes it fit very well with the state's priority to try to fund transit-oriented developments that where residents could take, take advantage of the public transit available for commuting to work. The site seems to be fairly readily developable. As I mentioned, there are flooding and wetlands issues. We believe sewage disposal opportunities are reasonable. The scale of this development would be assessed as part of this feasibility study, but we believe it will be fairly small scale, perhaps similar in size to Apple Tree Lane in terms of number of units, meaning something in the 10, or 12, or 15 unit range. It's a, it's a project size that many of the nonprofit developers are interested in, as opposed to something much larger, which perhaps would not be suitable or desirable for many reasons. So, it looks, from the committee's point of view, and certainly from mine, like a very viable prospect. Obviously, the town, at this stage, is not committing 100% to doing this. Town approvals will be required, including eventually town needing approval for any kind of lease or sale to a developer, should it get that far. Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance approvals will also be required, I think, for disposition of any town property. If the feasibility study looks positive, the next step in this process would be, I believe, for us to request proposals from qualified developers. We would, we would create a specification for what we wanted to see happen, how many units, what kind of, what kind of affordability range, other criteria, and then ask developers to submit proposals. But that's step two, after the feasibility study is completed, and assuming everything looks positive as a result of the feasibility study. Let me just refer you quickly to the map, so that you can see what portion of the Woodruff property we're actually talking about. This map, none of these features are labeled on this map, but you can see in the, kind of the right-hand side of the drawing, the public works garage and related facilities. You can see the Amtrak train station and the Amtrak facilities, Metro North Trains, I'm sorry, Shoreline East Train Station and the Amtrak rail facilities. Driveway is the road that serviced the public works garage, as you know, and the kind of undeveloped portion of this property that has the light tan color in the middle is the property that's owned by the town, as well as a couple of the other parcels over on the right-hand side of this drawing, one of which is kind of undeveloped, the other one has numerous build, vehicles stored, parked on it. All part, all of that property could be considered as part of this development. That's basically the geographic area.
You're talking about all this here?
That's correct. Most of that light gray, the light color is wetlands. So, the development would be over onto the left-hand side in the, where the area where the trees are. You can see that. Any physical development would be up in that area, as well as up along the road. And talking to several developers about this might very well lend itself to a sort of, sort of townscape scale or style of development, with dwelling units kind of up along the road in a very, sort of almost, you know, facing the road itself. But all of that is subject to further, further design.
So, what, what were the other properties? You said there were eight properties total.
I'm sorry.
That the committee looked at? You said they identified eight properties in town?
It's on the original report.
Yeah, it's in the original report. It was, it included, they were all privately owned. Most of them were, and certainly I can make, make copies of this available to you. They're mostly on the Route 1 West side of town. Again, the criteria for the DOH study was that they had to be accessible to public transit.
Right.
Which meant either bus, or in the center of town, accessible to the train station. So, there were four or five sites along Route 1 West, with various names, property owners, but I could get that information for you.
Okay.
They're all privately owned, all of them for sale, to the extent that they're for sale, market price. The developer interest, especially the nonprofit developer interest in the town-owned parcel is with the hope, perhaps, that we would do something similar to Apple Tree Lane, where the town assisted in subsidizing the development through a favorable lease or sale, favorable in terms of price, to the developers to help write down the overall development cost.
So, they would still buy the land, but at a lesser cost?
That's one option. Or lease, that's another option. Again, that would be one of the things that would be explored as part of this feasibility study. Feasibility study mostly focused on the physical characteristics and constraints. Once that was done, then the town would write the specifications for exactly what type of proposals we wanted, and then we would include, you know, the option of purchase or lease, and perhaps developers would make proposals along those lines.
George, on the original grant that we received.
Mm-hmm.
Which was, I believe, about $20,000.
Twenty thousand, correct.
Okay, okay. Which selected, did a site selection.
Correct.
Which included the eight properties, which this was one of them.
Correct.
And then they prioritized the properties, which I believe this was the one or two, if I can remember the report that you gave to all of us.
Correct.
Didn't they assess some of these criteria?
Yes.
Okay.
At least preliminarily.
Traffic and sewage.
And looked feasible, correct.
And so, aren't we doing this again?
Well, this would be much more specific and much more detailed. That was, that was very, it was generic. It was based on generally available, publicly available information. It wasn't based on any specific testing of each site. For example, this site, if this feasibility study moves forward, we would map the exact boundaries of the wetlands, which we don't have now. We would do additional soil testing to ascertain exactly what kind of septic system would, would fit. We would do design. We haven't done any kind of preliminary design on any of those other sites. So, that was kind of the first cut, to get an overall feasibility assessment, primarily based on sewage disposal. That was the principal criteria that went into the original selection. So, this would move forward in a much more detailed way. And this would also be, and I'm sure the state is going to, as you know, the state is not just giving money away without an expectation of some kind of return, and what the state is interested in is encouraging affordable housing development in communities that have the potential for it, and especially in communities where there's public transit available. So, that seems to be the criteria. So, we believe we meet all the state's criteria, but the state is also looking for some commitment, and this is, I think, the important discussion from the, for the Board of Selectmen now, some level of interest and commitment in actually moving this forward. They don't want to give us $50,000 to do this study if we're not somewhat serious about actually making this property available for this purpose, assuming these other criteria, assuming all these criteria weigh out, but on the same, by the same token, recognizing that it's not the final call of the Board of Selectmen in terms of making the property available, either through lease or sale. Eventually, it would require, according to our charter, this is, I understand it, town needing approval.
Yep.
But the Board, but the state is certainly looking for a preliminary indication of interest in making this property available for this purpose. Again, depending on the feasibility study, depending on the, on the public reactions and all the other things that'll be part of this.
This affordable component is in addition to or replacing the parking?
My view, my understanding is we have a, I want to say commitment, to the Department of Transportation to provide parking. So, that this would have to, and I don't know that that's, there's an absolute number of spaces that we're required to commit to, commit. That may be somewhat negotiable. But my view is that this would have to fit with the provision of parking as well. It could very well be a plus if there's state funding available for parking, and also state funding available for the housing.
Where is the proposed entrance to the parking?
It would come off of driveway.
When you suggested that perhaps, and I think this is a question for the feasibility study, in looking at the map, you were suggesting that maybe a streetscape-type thing, a long driveway there.
Mm-hmm. That was one design idea.
Yeah. I would like to see the feasibility study address. I would like to see the feasibility study address if that is the most logical situation, because that, you know, is a fairly industrial area, especially with the Public Works Garage across the street.
Yes, no question.
And I would hate to see us make an investment and line up residents along directly across from that industrial area.
Absolutely.
And then find out the new residents have a problem with pre-existing, okay? And I think if we address that in the feasibility study and do it with some, either off driveway roadwork, or, I don't know, I, I don't want to get in a situation where we build something and start transitioning this neighborhood, because we have the investment in the Public Works Garage, and there are other businesses down there.
Yes.
Start creating a mix that doesn't work, so.
I understand, definitely understand that.
I think affordable housing is a great idea, I think we should, you know, follow through with feasibility. I, some red flags for me, when you started saying, lining them up there on driveway directly across from that industrial area.
Right, no question.
We have to take some thought, I mean, I think if you made a driveway into that tree area utilizing the trees, and maybe find a way to make some parking at the end of that road, or something.
Absolutely, that's another possibility.
Might become more feasible, so, you know, if there was a way to address that in the feasibility study, those options, I think it'd be worth it.
Right, no question. Well, that, I mean, that's a very good point. You know, some of us have the expectation that in the long run, this whole area is going to be transformed. In fact, the Town Center South Plan suggests that this whole area is transformed from a, from a sort of low intensity or low-density industrial development into something that's more high-density transit-oriented.
The land's awful valuable for what we're using it for, but we had this investment, and, you know, it was a decision made before our time, and we're living with it at this point in time. You know, in the big picture, I tend to agree with you, it would have been a better use for that property than a garage.
You also, you do have the privately-owned industrial business use there, A&W, which is actually more directly across the street from where this would be.
Would these, oh, would these be rental units or for-sale condos?
That, that would be something that would be determined down the road, and something we could decide, the town could decide as part of this RFP process. If we wanted to prescribe that they be for sale, then we could do that. If we wanted to leave that open to the development proposal, we could do that. Let me just make it, my, my point about the, maybe this is a little bit wishful thinking, but the idea that we have two state funding sources, one for the parking area and the other for the development, the housing development, maybe there's a way of sort of marrying those two things and actually leveraging a better product as a result of that, where the parking is shared by both transit users and the residents in the development, that the physical plan is integrated in a, in a desirable way. So, all of that would be addressed as part of the feasibility study. Let me also point out that we, we do have an existing affordable housing, a privately-owned affordable housing development, if you want to call it that, right next to this property, the Vista-owned so-called Trans House, which is that kind of big building just to the left of the tree area on our property. That's also, it's operated by Vista, which is a service organization, and they maintain, I believe it's five or six apartments in that building right now.
George, the last time, maybe, show you notice, the last time we met with DOT and the railroad and everything else, there was still money in, held in escrow by the state for parking. Is that money still there, or has that been withdrawn?
I have no idea.
We have no idea. I mean, that was before Commissioner Reddiger was commissioner, that was a long time ago.
Yeah.
Because he, he met with us, right Jim?
Yeah, so those funds have all been expended upgrading the train stations. There was never any money earmarked before this parking lot. It was just money that was available, and they've used it for building other trains, other train stations.
And at that time, we talked about parking on the north side of driveway, as we look at this map, and it was alongside of the Vista property.
And they, they haven't met with us since, they've just pretty much dropped the project. And like Jim said, have decided to build, or modernize, I should say, train stations in other towns, Branford, Madison, modeling our up and over, which you were instrumental in getting. So, they have not been very aggressive in our approach at all in expanding our parking. The question I have is that, well, a question, a comment, is first of all, this would add, obviously, be in addition to our tax rolls, because it'd be taxable property.
The, this would operate, well, it depends on who the ultimate developer is going to be and what the ownership form is. It could end up being like Neighbor Works, Apple Tree Lane, where they make, they pay taxes even though legally they are not required to pay taxes, because they're a nonprofit entity, so that.
It depends how, how it's structured.
How the final ownership is structured.
And I think if you take a couple of minutes and explain again what we consider affordable, as opposed to the broader term affordable, I mean, we're looking to have housing for, you know, people who live, who are trying to live in Guilford, who actually work in Guilford, like our entry-level police and fire, or people who work in Town Hall.
Or across the street.
Across the street.
Right.
Okay.
Well, you know.
Public Works, okay.
The definite, there, the use of the term affordable housing is, there's a precise legal definition that the state has, but you notice that in the state's programs, in this particular program, they've moved away from the affordable housing terminology. They now refer to this as housing for economic development. And I think that's the official state title about these funding programs, so I think that recognizes what you're just saying, is that the state feels, and they fund this type of development, because in order to facilitate economic development, employers need to be able to hire people in the lower wage ranges, where those, where people are earning those kinds of incomes typically can't afford for-market housing. So, that's kind of the direction that the state is hoping that we will move in. And again, we will have the final call on exactly what the affordability structure is, subject to our nego, whatever negotiations we make with the ultimate developer. We can, we can determine that, and we would probably do that working with the developer and with the funding agencies, so that, in fact, it actually makes financial sense for the developer, so that they can pay whatever bills they have to pay, but all of that can be packaged as part of this final arrangement that we would make with whatever developer we choose.
Because the, correct me if I'm wrong, the current term affordable housing would be 80% of the per capita income of the community.
Right. The affordable, the definition of affordable is a household earning 80% or less of the median household income for the community. In the case of Guilford, I've forgotten, I don't want to, I've forgotten exactly what the number is.
Our median, I think it's $93,000.
Yeah, so it's, it's somewhere in the 60 or 70,000 dollar range.
Seventy-something thousand dollars.
Right. That's total household income.
Right.
Would meet the official definition of affordability.
Right. Okay.
Do you need a motion?
I do, if we want to move ahead.
Are you looking for a motion for the Board of Selectmen to apply for this grant?
That we take action with that Joe signed?
I would, I think you should authorize, in my opinion, the first selectmen to prepare and submit this application, so.
Motion's been made, and second, is there any discussion on the motion? Questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, George. Item seven, Fire Chief Charles Herschaff, consider and take possible action to purchase white Ford Taurus with the police package off the state contract, 12PSX-0194.
This is a replacement vehicle that we're going to purchase. Good morning. Just get moving here. The, this is a replacement vehicle for myself, the 2016 Ford Taurus, is going to be coming from MHQ, Inc., out of Marlboro, Mass., that are the ones that have the state contract for these vehicles, the same vehicle placed at the police department buys their vehicles. And the amount of the vehicle is $30,691.63.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? That's, this is in our operating budget. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, chief. I think one won last night, huh? He didn't hear me.
No, he didn't hear you.
Okay.
I heard this.
Item eight, Town Engineer Jim Portley, consider and take possible action to contract with Tilcon under state bid, VIP bid 15PSX-0228, with the overlay of Moose Hill Road, Granite Road, Northwood Drive, and Barn Shed Drive Lane. Good morning, Jim.
Good morning. These, these projects were in the town budget. The overlay for Northwood and Barn Shed would come out of the capital, and the funds for the overlay on Moose Hill Road are coming out of the dedicated road fund, but these were viewed during the process of the budget, and we have the money, so I would recommend the Board of Selectmen approve these contracts with Tilcon, they're our best price, yeah, all the load-based bids, so.
I move.
Second.
Motion's been made, and second, any discussion? See, none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Can be around later?
Yes.
unanimous. Nine, consider and take possible action on noise ordinance variants from the St. George Men's Group, movie night event. Jim, you want to come up?
Yeah, we have, we did come up.
I need you.
We did it last year, and of course, being a movie outside, we have to wait till it's dark, so the movie goes on about 8:45, 9 o'clock, that's a couple hours, so the movie should be over by 11 o'clock, probably more like quarter to 11. And then we have to clean up, so we have backpacks and stuff like that to blow the garbage or whatever that was put down in the parking lot. Takes about 15 to half an hour. It should be done by 11:15, 11:30 altogether, that's what it was last year. I think 11:15 they were done.
Okay, the event is the 23rd, and just, as you can see, the police chief has signed off and approved for the variance on the noise ordinance for the event. So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Sorry to keep you waiting.
Hope to see it moving.
Okay, oh yeah. Okay, item 10, appointments and resignation, 10-1, act on a resignation received from Richard Hudson from the Planning and Zoning Commission. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, regrets, thank you. Eleven, a request for the use of town property, act on a request from the Country Day School to place a sign on the green advertising its summer tours and taking place July 6th through the 10th, sign placement 7-18 to 8-1.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Twelve, correspondence, you all received a letter regarding the, from a resident, regarding the revow, contesting that it's, we're one year early, my town council, or town council, in-house council has addressed that, and we are well within our rights, so we've taken care of that, and if it goes any further, we'll, I'll take care of that. Any comments? Okay. Committee reports on the mass notification system. Put together a policy, which I've sent to Selectmen Ballast Tracy and to the Fire Chief, who's also in charge of communications. Fire Chief has made his recommendations, Paul and I have looked at them, made mine. I think by the next meeting, we should have a policy for you to vote on, right, Paul? Okay, that's where we are. Any other committee reports? Have you heard from?
No.
From BOE?
No.
BOE, no, okay. All righty, any old business? On new business, I'd just like to report unfortunate incidents going around the country with, with our police departments. I'm very heartened that our, as citizens, have reached out to our police department and have really shown their support in the way of thanking them and expressing the gratitude for all of the hard work and for protecting our citizens and their, and their property, and the police department really appreciates it. I paid a visit last night to the roll call for both the shift ending and the 11 o'clock, the midnight shift, I should say, coming on with the chief and with the chairman of the Police Commission, and expressed this board's appreciation for all the hard work that the police department does in protecting its citizens, and told them that we really appreciate all the work they do, and, and I think they felt that, they do feel that the town has their back now, so I just wanted to put that out there, that they have the support of the town, and if residents come across, our policemen just to say thank you for the job that they're doing, okay? You all okay out there? Okay. Okay, anything else? Public forum, I see anybody who wished to address the board. I guess we'll ask for a.
Move your turn.
Second.
All right, before we have collapses in here. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
What is this letter all about?